... Military, our policeman, our fireman, Lord, if you end up in detention for your display of offense in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please hold on, please.
Mr. Visser.
Here.
Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Mr. Distlecombe.
Here.
Mr. Danenberg.
Here.
Mr. Hopperden.
Here.
Mr. Van Danen.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Kyers.
Here.
Mr. Bergman.
Here.
Mr. Benske.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, the head of the board.
Thank you. Um, petitions or communications, I have none?
I do have one petition or one communication, um, and I believe this was also emailed to you. It was an email, uh, received by me at, um, on the 12th from Mr. Adam C. M., uh, who's a Georgetown Township resident, uh, and in this petition, uh, he used the circulator petition regarding Hager Park sign. He included that online petition, you know, like, uh, with 1,284 signatures, um, uh, in regards to that petition. So I think you've all received that as well by email.
All right, thank you. A motion to approve the agenda. So, move. All in favor of that?
Aye, aye.
All opposed, same thing. Actions and reports, consent resolutions, Mr. DeYoung.
Maybe, Mr. Chairman, I have to make the motion for dissent.
Items one, two, three, four. Questionless comments? Hold on, hold on.
Mr. Kyers.
Yes.
Mr. Hopperden.
Yes.
Mr. Visser.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Mr. Distlecombe.
Yes.
Mr. Hopperden.
Yes.
Mr. Van Danen.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I need to back up a minute. I totally, uh, forgot why most of the people were here today. Uh, I apologize for skipping over public comments, but we will take public comments at this time. I would ask if you approach the podium, um, we would, uh, ask that you give us your name and address and limit your remarks to three minutes.
Is there any other public comment for the Hager Park thing on the order?
Um, there will be public comment at the study session as far as, oh.
I have the official public panel right now.
Yeah.
We have two here.
Except public comment at closing, too, as well. Right, yeah, there will be one more at the close of this meeting.
And then we're going to have the work section after that, correct? Well, here we are, exact first of the year, a milestone in my life.
We have your name, Mr. Chairman.
David Lee Moore in Allen Dale Township, 1034567. As I said, the first of the year is pretty important for me, uh, the deadline, the ability of this commission to resolve and dissolve the issue with the road commission, an organization that has appointees that you place there, an organization that I can prove according to at least one judge that they violated the law, an organization that I believe I can prove live to that judge, try to deceive and manipulate, do the same thing to the appellate court and to the Supreme Court. Very disappointed, to say the least, in the outcome of where we're at right now, I don't believe it's over. Um, I would tell you this, any judgment that's based upon lies and deceit doesn't hold any water. How the appellate court got to where it did, stating that any government agency is basically omnipotent and doesn't have to follow the law and the laws of the land, I would challenge you on the Constitution of the United States of America, that is bogus and untrue. You are required to follow the law. And you can't, as I said, in the second paragraph of the Declaration of Independence, tells us what we're supposed to do when the government no longer follows the law of the land. We're being pushed, the people are being pushed in a position because their representatives no longer represent them, but they represent the church. You're not here to take care of your buddy that's sitting next to you or your appointees that have done wrong. Showing the love of Christ is not telling your brother that it's okay to lie and deceive, but to pick him up out of the mud and the wrong that he's done and to help him not do it again. You think you can steal the food off the plates of my, my family and embrace me later and tell me you're going to work with me? Arbitrary and capricious is exactly what this has been. I'm not going away. Send who you will. Yeah, I had EPA at my doorstep because I believe one of you sent in there to try to cause more ruckus. That's all right, frankly. Let me know how that works out for you. I'm not afraid and I'm not running away. God is my Savior and I stand by the Constitution of the founding fathers that started this country. And many men have died for more worthy causes, but I will not leave.
My name is Matthew Coyniff, 6560 Olson Drive, Hudsonville. I come to speak about the decision that was made to remove the sign from Hager Park. At the last meeting that I attended, we discussed budgets, we discussed parks, we discussed historical monuments, but let us not forget, gentlemen, what made all of this such a society possible. The idea of expression of religion in the public view goes deeper than politics. It is the fabric of our community. We meet here as free men in the most free nation the world has ever seen, but the men who founded this nation and brought to life this system of government realize there, there must be a fundamental aspect to our government and her people. There is of necessity a foundation upon which this free nation must operate. To remove the sign from public view is to remove God from the foundations of our society. No man would willingly tear down the foundation of his home, for he understands its importance. We must be careful not to tear down the foundations of our society. George Washington said it is impossible to rightly govern a nation without God or the Bible. And the founding fathers of our nation, who knew its people intricately, who understood the fabric of what these people lived in and thought, they understood that God had a fundamental and priority place in our society. Charles, Robert Charles Winfrey, who was the speaker of the House of Representatives in the late 1800s, said this. He said, "Men in a word must necessarily be controlled either by a power within them or by a power without them, either by the word of God or the strong arm of man, either by the Bible or by the Bayonett." No historian, no politician can turn a blind eye or a deaf ear upon which this country was founded. My friends, my fellow citizens, the direction that this county and the direction that this nation is going down is one of throwing God out of public view. To follow that argument to the logical farthest progression is communism. If we want to remove every mention of God out of public line, that leaves you with communist Russia, it leaves you with communist China. Men and women on the threat of their lives flee these places every day because of the torments and agony of their native country to come here, a place where God is prominent. My friends, if we are to sit here as free men, not under stringent law, not under a dictator, but governed by a force within, namely God of the Bible, if you allow any of the religion to guide society, you get Iraq, you get Afghanistan, you get Syria. But my friends, to allow the, the Bible to dictate the path of our politics, the path of her people, and the path of her preachers, is to allow God to bless that nation. There has been no nation so free on the pages of history because there has never been a nation so godly in all of history. Let us not forget our Creator. Let us not forget or turn a blind eye to the one who has blessed us so. If we, as citizens of the United States of America, and residents of Ottawa County, want to hand to our children and grandchildren a free nation and a free society, let us not turn aside or review the one who has given to us. Thank you.
Joseph Parnell McCarter, 6408 Ringwood, Genuson, Michigan. The removal of the Hager Park sign by the Ottawa County Parks Department Board is a picture of the way over time our nation has been seeking to cast off five degrees God to biblical Christianity, having far departed from what was established in America by our pilgrim Comperitan forefathers. The next shoe probably to drop will be recognition of so-called gay marriage, following a long list of other departures, and so portion, dah 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 dah, from the Word of God. I am afraid these words from Psalm 2 describe us. Why do the heathen rage and the people imagine a vain thing? The kings of the earth set themselves and the rulers they counselled together against the Lord and against his anointed, saying, "Let us break their bands asunder and cast away their cords from us." What God thinks of this is described in the following verses of the same song. "He that sitteth on the heavens shall laugh; the Lord shall have them in derision; then shall he speak unto them in his wrath, and text them in their sore displeasure. Yet have I set my king upon my holy hill of Zion. I will declare the decree the Lord hath set unto me: Thou art my son; this day have I begotten thee. Ask of me, and I shall give thee the heathen for thy inheritance, and the uttermost parts of the earth for thy possession." Acts 1333 makes clear that this is speaking of the resurrection of Jesus Christ, so Psalm 2 is speaking of the very post-resurrection period in which we live. How does God want us now to repent? That is described in the following verses of the same song. "Be wise now therefore, O you kings; be instructed, ye judges of the earth; serve the Lord with fear, and rejoice with trembling; kiss the Son." The word kings here refers to national leaders, and the word judges refers to subordinate civil magistrates like the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners. Romans 13 says, "First and foremost, kings and judges are ministers of God, who must follow God's moral law in the Bible, despite what any manmade laws, constitutions, or pronouncements may say to the contrary. Your first duty is to uphold God's Word and His moral law and the honor of His Son Jesus Christ." For this reason, I am distributing a petition that urges the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners to pass this resolution. We proclaim and acknowledge Jesus Christ as Board of this county, looking to Him as Savior from the transgressions committed by the people, and resolving by God's grace to follow Him in importance with biblical principles. And I urge the board to restore the Park sign consistent with such a stance towards God. Thank you for consideration, Mr. Chairman.
Reverend Tyler Waggoner, 5166 64th Avenue, Hudsonville. I know that others will later on also probably be addressing the issue of the Hager Park sign, and that's not what I specifically want to talk to you about. Actually, I was a little over a year ago, I was here at a county commission meeting, and I know, um, you're talking about budget issues. Al had given a little bit of a presentation about the, uh, how the county had hired on a civil rights commission out of the Lake Shore area to do mandatory training, and I had come up to the podium at that time and I said, just kind of tongue-in-cheek a little bit, you know, perhaps, uh, as a county, the employees could, um, uh, could benefit from a religious type of, of training, of education, a sensitivity training. And, uh, part of the reason it was given for, on the civil rights thing, you know, we're a broad, diverse, um, growingly increasingly diverse county, and, and so to help the employees of the county know how to interact with, uh, with the growing diversity in our county. And, uh, in many ways, or, um, the county commission said that makes a lot of sense, and will continue to fund, I think, Al maybe was in the tune of $15,000 or something, $30,000 or something like that, for the training. And, uh, and I said, well, you know, as pastors in, in the county, some of us could get together and we could put together some type of training. And, uh, this whole issue, for instance, of Hager Park and then in Grand Haven, the Google of the cross, were just a reminder to me that, you know, perhaps what I said tongue-in-cheek then might actually really be necessary. We live in a county that historically has a lot of deep faith traditions and a lot of it's very quiet. I was, I was just at a pastor's meeting at Howl and Right to Life this morning, it was a practice, and they were, again, in a very quiet way, how Howl and Right to Life works, and many of you I know are very familiar with the word of Howl and Right to Life. And, uh, and then conversely, I was just at lunch at the City Own Hill Ministry, wonderful Christian ministry in many ways that are housed there, and some of us pastors, and just talking about this ministry, just life in general, this whole issue didn't, didn't come up at all in any of that conversation, because a lot of the pastors and the Christians in our congregations, they're just very content, they're quiet, they're, for the most part, gentle, there's some not always so gentle, but for the most part, they're gentle, and they're just quietly living out their faith. And so when things like this happen, crosses come down, signs with scripture that aren't even necessarily specifically Christian passages, the Psalms belong to the, the Jewish faith as well, but, uh, when, when stuff like that happens, we're reminded, you know, maybe there is a lack of sensitivity, a lack of understanding about the faith tradition, how that's a core identity to many, to many residents here in Ottawa County, and to so almost conflitently just remove it, um, a few individuals remove something that, uh, is, you know, the core identity of many people, uh, in which there's not a whole lot of it taking place in our public property and, uh, throughout the county, um, in city-owned property, these, these displays of, of Christian or even just deistic type of, uh, interpretation of things. To see that even, um, removed is, is distressing, and I think, uh, county-wide, perhaps, uh, the employees could and boards could stand to, to again, get a lesson on the faith tradition and the church tradition and, uh, throughout our county. That is not only evident in many of the churches, which are owned by the churches and those who belong to it, but, uh, but are just lived out. And so perhaps, uh, there might be a subcommittee that would look into that, and, uh, we as pastors could come and create something like that, um, for, for the employees of, and the boards of Ottawa County.
Thank you. Patrick Alma Coin, 1168 6028 Avenue, Hudsonville, Michigan, Georgetown Township. I know, probably, I take it for granted, that most churches, uh, churches and, I just come from Grand Haven, the, uh, building up there, talk to this dead guy out there. Uh, maybe you could answer the question that I have, okay? When Hagers donated that heart to the county, and it is not written in the deed, it's not written down anyway, but they requested that this sign would be there, right? How much weight does a request carry? When did it stop being a request? Could the county take it over without honoring that request? Is that request still valid today? That's what the guy told me out there. It is not written in any, or on paper, but it was a request of the Hagers, all right? They had that sign up there. Could the pa, could the county take it over at that time without honoring that request? If they could not, when does the request quit? When it was given from that? So this is what we got to, like, look out to, or in. Uh, we're having a meeting tonight at RASIS, uh, with the Association, Law Association, all that, to see what we can come up with or whatever, and all that. That's what I wanted to know, is that request still down? All right? Thank you, and thank you for your good job, you guys. Thank you.
David Lee Moore in Allen Dale Township, part of the Hager Park sign. The words that are written on it, the heavens declare his glory and the earth proclaim his handiwork, these words, I believe, were words that were written by King David, a man that was revered and honored, a people some, by some considered one of the greatest kings ever was. Yes, they happen to be in the Bible, but those were also his words, just like many scholar words are spoken and approved and appreciated. I stood here today as you were starting the meeting, you pled allegiance to that flag, one nation under God. I heard the invocation given this morning, "Be brave to Jesus." Look at your money, one nation under God. Constitution is what you guys gave an hope to uphold. You heard a lot of good words, the bottom line is, the Constitution is what you were told to uphold. And that says this, you're not to establish one religion for this community or this country. Evidently, pledging allegiance under God doesn't do that. God on your money doesn't do that. I don't know how you can make a jump and say that because you post some word that a king once spoke, that says, "Look around you, look at the vastness of the, of the skies and the, and the handiwork of this creation that you walk amongst, and take notice what it is." I challenge anybody that's a true Christian, can't help but see that without those words there, but that's what those words say. They don't say, "This is the established religion and you will abide by it." Think about our founding fathers, they left Europe for one reason, most of them, because they didn't want that established church, because that established church became corrupt because it had all power. That's what they're talking about. I don't know how you can say that having one sign up in a park that was evidently requested by the people who donate land, establish one religion. It's time to step up to the plate, follow the Constitution, and do the right thing.
Betty Joltis for 81739 Hudsonville. I just have a question, I don't expect an answer. Was the sign removed voluntarily by the Board of Commissioners, or were you ordered by the court?
I'm Cheryl Dean, 30, I'm from 5741 Lincoln Street in Hudsonville, and I think it's a shame that we would bow down to one man when there are people in a rag, having their children be hidden because they won't be named Jesus.
Amen.
And I have heard Dr. Hager speak as a pastor, very good man, and I think if you look at what's going on today, you'd be turning around in this grave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Much is been said about, um, a small, one, two group of people, uh, aligned with some national organization, and how they are offended by the presence of that sign. If a small minority who is offended can cause an action such as removing the sign, what about all these people who are more so offended and the hundreds of other people in what is predominantly a Christian community? Is it only to offend 99% because 1% is offended by something? Is our, is our governmental system upside down? Will this being offended at a local thing here in the county, or in Hudsonville, will that spearhead its way across the country until the entire city of Washington DC is destroyed because every building has something very similar on it? It just appals me, absolutely appals me, and I am offended that that sign was taken down, and I believe everybody in this room, perhaps, I don't know, maybe there's one or two representing those other concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Abby Gilne, I represent several relatives who live in Ottawa County, though I'm not self, from Halligan, from the James Tom Bernice area. I think that this whole tempest is a good thing. It makes us review our history and our foundations, the purpose of government, and looking back, the founders were consistent when they wrote in the Declaration of Independence that the role of government was to secure our rights, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Our property rights, our rights to life, our rights to express our faith, those are all important to all of us, and the question is how to maintain those rights as an individual right without approachment by government. To my way of thinking, the sign wasn't a religious expression in the community, removing it was an oppressive act by government in the name of freedom of religion, and how to reconcile those apparently opposing views. I think it's not difficult when you go back to the foundations, the first principles that made our country great. Remember that the sign was not an edict, it did not force anyone to do anything. It was a witness to the foundation of our country, written in the Bible. When you acknowledge the existence of God, you acknowledge the existence of something greater than man, pointing out that each of us is responsible to a higher being. The fact that some may not believe that is fine, but they should be thankful for those who do. Because acknowledging the right of conscience means that government cannot force anyone to worship. It leaves freedom of conscience to everyone. That's why those same founders who wrote the Declaration, who wrote the, um, Bill of Rights that put an establishment of religion, also wrote in the Northwest Ordinance, which was the founding document for our state, back when it was just still the Northwest Territories, religion, morality, and knowledge being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind. Schools and the means of education, such as public signs, shall forever be encouraged. Please put back the sign.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Anne Lovett Foot, 2635 Cedar Grove North, Genuson, Michigan. I am all involved in this county, Genuson mail address, um, Hudsonville schools, Ottawa County, recent governor, and I'm here to defend the Word of God and the First Amendment of the Constitution. And I would ask you gentlemen to think carefully about what you're doing to ourselves and our future generations. My grandchildren love coming to visit me because they've never been to a prayer like Hager Park, and I point out all the things, and especially that, that song, "The heavens declare the glory of God, and the skies proclaim his handiwork." Just look around us today at the beautiful blue sky that we're blessed with, great Michigan, just down the road here. I feel so honored to live in such a I feel so honored to live in such a wonderful area, and I want my children and grandchildren to it. Do enjoy this one, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Action items, I have none, appointments, I have none. Discussion items, entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss a written opinion. Board?
Mr. Visser?
Yes.
Mr. Bensky?
Yes.
Mr. Diseltum?
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Habberting?
Yes.
Mr. Van Dan?
No.
Mr. Hopeflor?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. Burkin?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
And every party, if they're in charge.
We're going to closed session and we're going to discuss this topic with our... And you're going to come back, and then we will come back to closed session. Closed session, and I apologize for the length of time that we kept you waiting.
Your better.
We've got quite a few questions.
Ken here.
We'll continue with our meeting. Report of the county administrator. I have nothing additional to say. General information, comments?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we release the attorney opinion that was given to us just a few moments ago.
Go call both.
Mr. Danenberg?
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung?
Yes.
Mr. Bensky?
Yes.
Mr. Van Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Habberting?
Yes.
Mr. Visser?
Yes.
Mr. Burkin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopeflor?
Yes.
Mr. Diseltum?
Yes.
Mr. Kyers?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
We will instruct Parker Council to release that through Mr. Van Essen. Any other comments or meetings attended? Second opportunity for public comments. Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's purely a question to the board.
You said your name and address.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My name is Michael Curass, and I'm resident of Spring Lake. Since the board has agreed to release the legal opinion, if you're not going to summarize that opinion in a working session, could you provide a summary now before you adjourn the formal session? Otherwise, if you're going to bring it up in the working session, that's good.
Our plan is to adjourn this meeting, have a short break, and then we'll go into our work session. And Mr. Van Essen will give a public summary of his opinion at that time. Move it up here, second. All the papers there?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Why don't we take a bite of that, grateful being that...